I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. I think time has about snuck up on me. I've been gently reminded by Councilman Overton it's time to start. So, before we begin, I'll invite you to stand and join me in the pledge and then I'll bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a duty and justice to follow.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day you've given us. God, we thank you for the ability to serve our communities and the capacity of each person up here. And God, we take that trust seriously. We just ask you to guide us tonight as we make decisions for our community. God, may we honor you in everything that we do tonight. And we ask you these things and trust you for them now in Jesus' name. Amen. All right, I'd like to again welcome you to this regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020. This year is flying by. And we'll start at -- well, first of all, we do have large grant agendas over here if anyone needs one, or Ashley's got them over here, if that would be beneficial to anyone. Ashley, you might, if someone wants to pick up an agenda when they walk in. I think we'll have some people coming in and out of the meeting probably tonight. So, well, okay, we'll start out with a roll call.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Amelia Williams?
Yes.
Jeff Watson?
Here.
Mike Overton?
Here.
Jim Reed?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Rick Evans?
Here.
Brian Powell?
Here.
Kathy Jaycocks?
Here.
Ernest Cate?
Here.
All right, thank you. Everyone's here. And we'll move on to item four in the agenda. This is the portion of each meeting that the council sets aside to hear brief comments from citizens. And we ask only that you come to the microphone one at a time. You clearly state your name and address, and keep your comments brief, and understand that no action will be taken tonight on what you have to bring to the council. So, is there -- I see we've got one already. If you'd like to address the council, sir, concerning an item that is not on tonight's agenda.
Yes, sir. My name is George Franklin. I'm just a teller. And I'm tired of a man harassing me, saying I wasn't homeless, and blasting me on the internet. He even blasted me all over. He said, "He harassed me. He's hurting me."
Okay.
And he didn't even come give me an apology. That's all I wanted.
All right, thank you, sir. That's your comment. I'm not sure there's anything in that that the council--
I want something done about it.
Well, it's outside the realm of this council to address that. But your comments are on the record?
But his wife is only city council.
Excuse me?
His wife is only city council, and she's part of his damn thing, too.
Okay.
She's done it, too.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next.
My name is Martha Sandoval. And I just want to talk about an incident that happened a week ago. The page from the Facebook is Life Springdale. And I don't know the person's name, but he's been attacking this guy. He's attacking my business. He's attacking me personally. And the only thing, like I said, I just want an apology because what happened, this page, Life Springdale, people gets confused that it's from the city official. So, I just want to let them know that it's not an official page. And as a citizen, I deserve an apology from Life Springdale because this guy is being in my business. And he said that he took his wife, his wife is here, to check my business, too. I feel really offended, not from one person, just for two people. I don't think I deserve that as a citizen. And I need an apology from this page, from this person. Life Springdale is the page name. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Do we have another, any more public comments? Okay, don't see anybody else? All right, we'll move on then to item five, the approval of minutes. You've had the minutes from June 9th. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Second.
Second, sorry.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All opposed, same side? All right, thank you. Procedural motions, item six. What's your pleasure, counsel?
Move for A and B.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
All right, thank you.
Let me read the title first, and then it's a resolution appointing judges and clerks of election pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated section 14 dash 40 dash 1202a2 for the special election on the question of the consolidation of the city of Bethel Heights, Arkansas into the city of Springdale, Arkansas. And what this, this is required by the consolidation statute that the city is required to select two judges and one clerk for each of the wards, the voting places. As you can see, attached to the resolution is, are both the Washington County Election Commission notice stating who the election judges and clerks are for each of the voting precincts for the special election on August 11th, and also for Benton County, the election commission as well. And I, and Denise can verify this, but the folks that are on this list are the folks that regularly work these particular voting precincts. They have experience in working in elections. So, this would just ratify those particular individuals who'll be working at those polling sites on August 11th. It's required, it's not required in a normal election to do this, but since this is a special election, the statute requires that we take this step.
And just to be clear, the city of Bethel Heights will be required to do the same thing for their, for the polling places in their city? Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments?
I'd just, I'd just like to say thank you to these poll workers for doing that for us.
Yeah. May need hazard pay.
[laughing]
All right, Denise?
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
All right. Thank you. Item eight, I see Patsy's on her way. Planning Commission report and recommendations by Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development.
The first item on the agenda is a request to rezone 1.27 acres located at 2300 Turner Street. They are requesting to rezone the property from Commercial District C5 to Lot Industrial District I1. The planning commission reviewed this request and recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, and ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Thoroughfare Commercial District C5 to General Industrial District I2 was their original request, and they agreed to downgrade it to a Lot Industrial District I1 and declaring an emergency. If you look at that, you can see most of the area around it is industrial. The C2 was kind of the different kind of zoning that was going into that. And there's just a drawing of the piece of property.
I move the ordinance to pass.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the resolution, or ordinance, I'm sorry. Any other comments or questions? Okay, roll call.
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Please the emergency clause be adopted.
Second. Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
And as the usual occurrence, it says emergency clause because there's pending action to be taken on these pieces of property. The next one is a request on property located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Sunset Avenue and Jean George Boulevard. This is two tracks. The first lot has 11.14 acres and the second lot has 9.69 acres. There may be a desire on the applicant to not go ahead and rezone Lot 2 to commercial at this time, but we want to at least go through with Lot 1, and I'll know more in the morning. They're having some discussions with the assessors on what impact rezoning the entire property would do at this time. But the ordinance right now includes both, both tracks. And if that changes by in the morning, we'll, or by the time the mayor signs it, we'll pull the Lot 2 off. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, and ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to Thoroughfare Commercial District C5 and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
If we pass the emergency clause, it affect what you just said about--
It'll only be track one and not both tracks. More than likely, we're going to keep both tracks in there, but they didn't have the answer they were looking for from the assessor's office about the second track. And so, we'll just take that, that one off. And they'll have to come back and ask again if they, when they're ready to rezon it.
So, by passing the emergency clause, though, does that affect that decision?
No, we think it would.
It would just apply to what ultimately--
Whatever, ultimately, which, whether it's one or two tracks, it'll only affect that one that we put in the final ordinance.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next request is to rezone 1.72 acres located at 3545 Julio Road. The request is to rezone this property from Agricultural District A1 to low, medium density, single-family residential district SF2. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, and ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to low, medium density, single-family residential district SF2 and declaring an emergency.
The ordinance to pass.
Second.
What do they want to do there, Patsy?
They want to split the lot and put two homes on it. The question will still remain whether they can split it or not because it's going to be too small for septic systems. And so, they have to work that issue out before they can split it.
Have to be SF2 before you can split it? Is that what it is?
Because they don't have enough frontage to do anything different. If they stay A1, it has to have 200 foot of frontage for each lot, which they don't have even for one. They can split it into two lots with 70 foot of frontage, but you still have the question of whether or not it's a big enough lot for a septic system. And they will have to address that before we can--
It says there's 1.72 acres.
Yeah. It was a non-conforming lot when it came into the city.
But, but you said it's not big enough for septic?
We don't know whether it is or not. It has a septic system on it now. Whether they can split it and have two systems on it, we don't know yet. And that's something that's--
Of course, it's got to perk out. But I think, I think a half acre is all that's required in a--
Well, it depends on the soil types. And in some areas, it takes about an acre for each one. But that's not a decision we make. That comes from the county health department. And when they get signed off protest, then we'll know whether they can move forward with the split or not. Okay? They can't do it if we don't rezon it. Okay?
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Anyone? All right.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
Well, that's--
The next request is to put, for a conditional use for a use unit 14, which is a residential manufactured home, to be added to this lot in the A1 district at 8932 Carey Smith Road. Planning Commission recommends approval of this conditional use with the condition that it must meet all building code requirements. Actually, the manufactured home's already out there. They just can't hook it up till the conditional use is granted. Title of the resolution reads, a resolution approving conditional use at 8932 Carey Smith Road is set forth in ordinance number 4030.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All right.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
The next item is a waiver request for street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks in connection with a single-family dwelling being built at 8780 East Brown Road. And normally, the requirement for the street improvements is not there, but the requirement for the sidewalk. So, they're asking for the re, the waiver of building the sidewalk at this location. Planning Commission recommends approval of option one of granting a waiver at this location. The title reads, a resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks is set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Cammie Scott in connection with 8780 East Brown Road, a single-family dwelling.
Move the resolution be adopted with option one.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Okay, Denise?
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
All right, number nine, item number nine, Street and Capitol Improvement Committee, Chairman Rick Evans. Rick?
He wouldn't be in last week's streets IP. He'd have one item on agenda tonight. And I'll go ahead and turn that over to Ernest Cate.
This is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle a condemnation lawsuit wherein the Marvin E. Moles revocable trust and the Sharon A. Moles revocable trust are defendants. This was forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval to approve the additional sum of $21,700 to settle this lawsuit. This was based on an appraisal provided by the property owner that showed, really, I guess you call it severance damages because of the effect it would have on the setback on the property.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I think this was forwarded with a recommendation for approval.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions?
I have a question. Ernest, when the, when that additional information came forward from their appraiser, was it sent back to our appraiser for adjustment?
No.
Why wouldn't it be?
Well, the land acquisition policy provides that if a counter offer is made, that, actually, it first goes to the mayor. And then we, he, he looks at all the facts involved and decides if it's reasonable under the circumstances. So, that's what we did. And there have been times we've done that in other cases where we have, you know, especially if it's--
Big difference.
Big difference, we'll send it back to them.
Big difference or didn't understand why there was such a difference. Yeah.
Depends on the funding for the project sometimes, too. It may trigger that requirement as well. Some, some projects require review appraisals in addition to us getting our own appraisals and the property owner getting their own appraisal. But this one seemed pretty straightforward presented to the mayor, so.
Further comments or questions? Anyone? All right, Denise?
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
All right, any comments from council?
Before we move--
Go ahead.
Mine is only because regarding code, what's the status of the project on Maple? Do you have any idea?
Actually, talked with Tom--
It's an older house, historic house that's being renovated.
215 West Maple?
Yeah, yeah. I don't remember where we left that.
The building inspector requested that we start the process over again. A letter has gone out advising them that they should be at the committee meeting on July 20th.
So, when we say starting over again, what are we talking about? Because it seems to me that this project's been on, before this council, probably for three years or longer.
The, the purpose would be to bring a raise and removal ordinance forward at the committee meeting on the 20th. And then, depending on what happens at committee, it may go to council on the 28th. They've been given a copy of the ordinance and the dates that it will come forward. Did they stop construction for some reason?
It's not--
They had put up a fence and started some cleanup at one time, but--
It's basically halted.
They've done, done quite a bit of a demo that was going to happen, and then it just seemed to have stopped.
Since there'd been such a gap in time, we just wanted to make sure that we had the whole process done.
Thank you. I just want to do it because I'm getting calls from people that live in that area because it's impacting their property values, too.
It's scheduled to come to committee on the 20th. We were going to do the sixth, but the building inspector wanted to give them a couple of extra weeks, so.
That's fine. Thank you.
Other comments, questions?
Yeah, mayor, I, I have gotten a couple emails, and I don't know if anybody else has. Couple emails asking us to look at defunding our police and using that money in other areas in our city. And I just want the people who are listening to us tonight, watching us, we are not defunding our police force. There's no way, no how we're doing that. And I know these are chain letters, chain emails, because they're, read the same except they just changed their name. And so, I just want our public to know that your mayor, your city council, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, we 100% back our police force.
Yeah.
They are great men and women who, who risked their lives to protect us and the visitors who come into our city. We are greatly appreciative to every one of our police officers. We have the best in the state. We have the best chief in the state. And they have our 100% support. And I just wanted to make that clear to others. And I believe these people who have, who have sent us in don't live in our community. They don't give their address. I did get an email from an individual who lives in our city. She gave us her address in full support. And so, I just wanted to make that clear and be on the record for that.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Any other comments?
Mayor, at the end of our last council meeting, I was quite caught off guard, as I think most of the other council persons were. And as a result of being caught off guard, and as a result of my loss of my composure, frustration, I was frustrated, I was irritated. And because of the process was out of the normal order, I did not get to ask the questions that normally would have been asked for a resolution coming before the council. It typically would have gone to a committee meeting prior to coming to the council where questions typically are asked. However, I am disappointed in myself in not asking those questions. And so, if you would allow--
Sure.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
Okay.
In regards to the resolution that was passed at the last council meeting for the new position, my first question is, the resolution calls for a pay scale of grade 96 and sets the amount at $53,800 to be appropriated for the balance of this year, I assume.
Right.
Can, can you explain how that was, how that was, 53,800 was calculated?
That's salary and all benefits and associated costs for, for the remainder of the year. And that was what that position graded out at.
We had had some discussion about this position in the past. Was that the same grade scale that had been discussed at earlier, in earlier discussions?
I think it is. I don't think, I think we just had it graded one time, didn't we, Wyman? I think there may be a little bump in the, in the salary because we, we put it at a different, different step. Is that correct? Or is that, no, actually, we were first proposing to pay under what it was graded. Correct?
Before, it was 55,000, I thought. And that was two months ago.
Which was, which was under what it graded.
So, what, why was it under before?
Well, Wyman and I discussed it and thought we probably, well, I, I'd put, I, that was my decision to put it under what it was graded because I just thought that was, Kobe was willing to do that. And I thought it was going to be easier to, to get passed. And then we would adjust it to the, to what it graded when we, when we went through budget.
We first started out going to work part-time, just worked four days a week.
That's true, too.
And that's why the funding was less.
And when we were first discussing it?
Right, the first--
But it was the same grade?
Same grade. But we were working for four days a week. But the longer we, more he got involved, we felt like we needed him full-time. So, we're, the last time we calculated it for him to do 40 hours a week.
Okay. And when did, when did the, what term is the 53,800 based on? When did that begin and when does it end?
It began the next day after, it was six and a half months of salary.
So, the months of July and half of June?
Right.
Okay. So, was it like the day after our council meeting that the pay began?
Well, I just figured six and a half months, and I didn't, didn't put a day on.
One particular day, is what you're saying? That there was not a particular day?
It started on the 10th, is when, when he began. It was on the 10th.
Okay. And part of the resolution says that the payment of this benefit, or this salary and benefits is to be paid from the salary savings from the director of public relations who, I, I did know at, at the last council meeting, at least I'd heard rumors that Ashley was leaving. And, but I think some people were very surprised by that. And there was very little discussion about that. When is Ashley leaving? And so, when do we start getting that savings? And is that savings from her leaving enough to fund the full 53,800?
I didn't recalculate, I didn't calculate the savings that we'll have from, from her leaving.
There will be a gap.
Well, but because it says it's to be paid from that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and what happens if we run out of money from that?
Well, the mayor--
It says paid first. I guess that's what it says.
Yeah, that's, yeah, paid first out of that. And, and about, to answer your first question, Ashley's last day is Friday, this Friday. So.
And he does not intend to fill that position, so that money will be left in the budget to, and not spent.
So, we don't know how much that is?
Pardon me?
The savings?
I didn't understand.
It'd be six months of savings, I guess, for that position being empty.
She'll get some accumulated vacation.
Okay, and part of the resolution says that the payment of this benefit, or this salary and benefits is to be paid from the salary savings from the director of public relations, who I, I did know at, at the last council meeting, at least I'd heard rumors